Okay, so on the Budget Committee side, it appears that Rick Edelman is not present, and Mary Seer is attending remotely. Is that correct?
Roseanne?
He's on there.
Yep, okay.
Jimmy, hold up the microphone closer to you.
Hi, Mary. Can the remote attendees hear me? Okay, it is working. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Mary, can you raise your right hand? No, apparently they can't hear me at all.
Larry did.
Very muted.
I think it's Mary's connection.
Frozen, almost.
It looks like everybody's here for the School Board, and Larry's attending remotely.
She has no volume.
She says she has no one?
She texted me, she has no volume.
Oh, okay. That's something that is her issue or that we can handle from here? It's our end? Okay. All right.
Call in on her cell?
No, I don't have any volume.
Call in on the phone?
You can.
Actually, I'd like to have a new feature.
Phone number that's in the announce? Oh, we don't have that for this. SAU site, yeah.
He said he sent the phone number in when he sent the link as well. Tammy?
On the Zoom call, she says.
So can she, she can't hear herself. Can you text her the number 606? 558-8656? That's the number she can call in on?
606-558-
646.
46? 558?
Correct.
The volume control is on the Chromebook?
Yeah.
The upper right-hand corner, there's a speaker.
No, it's, it's lower right-hand corner on the two black toolbar. So, on the keyboard, there's two buttons that have speakers with little curves. The right corner.
Let's just call her. She hung up on me. She doesn't realize it's me. All right, so. All right, we'll just get going. Okay, so, um, approval of minutes for Budcom. We had nothing to approve since our last meeting.
The meeting, what was the date?
November 4th. Second?
Second.
Good. All right, so now we're on to the superintendent. Oh, I'm sorry, what?
We have to go.
Sorry. My bad. All right, so.
Mary's remote.
Mary's remote, so. Okay. So, let's start off with a vote for approving minutes. Kim?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, Tammy. I used to have everybody in one side.
I approve it too.
All right. Now, the, Jim, do you guys have anything to step into this point, or?
The superintendent has some staff resignations and nominations.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Go call.
Larry?
Aye.
Charlie? Jamie?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
John? Tammy?
Aye.
Aye for me.
One resignation, Gillian Spiero. One nomination, Gillian Spiero, for a one-year position for Math.
Move to approve.
Get a second. All in favor? Larry?
Aye. Aye.
Charlie? Jamie?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tammy?
Aye.
An aye for me.
All right, so now for the Business Administrator to answer the questions for the Budget Committee and School Board members. That'll actually be me. Is it gonna be? Yeah, it'll be me. It'll be me. Okay, Ms. Ambrose.
Thanks. I was, I anticipated that.
Hey, guys. Stand here, and this is, apologize for the length of this because it's gonna be quite a while. There are 95 questions, I think, or 92.
That's fine. Not you.
Right, so this year, just a second, I'm gonna get to where I need to go. Instead of doing these in a slide, we did them in a document format this year so that we can just share the document, and people can look up their questions by number. And once I'm done presenting this information, we will share these with everyone. All right. First question, first question. So just for those of you who are new who have never been here, welcome. It's nice to see all of you tonight. What happens is the Board receives the Superintendent's recommended budget on November 4th this year, and then they have a week to read the budget and review it, and they submit questions. The Budcom sends them to the Budcom Chair, and the Board submits them to the Business Administrator. And then we go through all the questions and delete any duplicates and try to group them, sort of. And then we put them into a document like this. In the past, we've done a slideshow, but we were kind of a little bit pressed for time, and we felt like this might be easier to find online later to just look at the numbers instead of thinking about the slides. So we'll see how this goes. And there are about 93 questions, so this is going to take probably an hour and a half, to be honest. I know I talk really fast, so I'll try not to lose anyone, but I'm gonna zip along here because it's a lot. And again, you can read it after. All right, so the first question is, reductions for one-time COVID expenses except for the transportation excess expenses, what line items funded these expenses this year? So I also want to remind everyone, we do not edit questions. The questions are put in this document exactly as we receive them because we want to be completely transparent. Some of them have typos or funky coding issues and whatnot. We just, we leave it that way. So just wanted to say that before we keep, keep going. The answer is, the district received a grant that will cover most of the COVID preparedness costs, which include nearly all the costs for fiscal year 2021. As a result, there will be no one-time reductions for these expenditures. Question, why are we projecting a 17%, $17,000 increase over FY '20 actuals and property insurance? Shouldn't this be dropping with the sale of the seminary property and the Science Building? The answer is, we received a guaranteed maximum rate, GMR, related to all of our insurance products, except for health insurance, which included costs related to the seminary property, including the Science Building. The seminary property is under contract, but it is still owned by the district. Number three, other employee benefits. Which other employee benefits get charged here, and are they obligations under any bargaining agreement? These are 403B contributions per employment, per employment contracts. Sorry, I gotta scroll down to.
Ms. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. Ambrose?
Yes.
If your question, if your answer isn't clear to us, can we ask for clarification along the way?
You can email the Business Administrator after, because if I do that, we're gonna be here until 11:30 tonight.
I'm not talking about deliberation, I'm just talking about clarity.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not taking follow-up questions right now. I'm gonna read the answers, and if you need follow-up clarity, you can email the Business Administrator after, because we'll be here way too late. This is gonna go long. All right, number four. Can you turn this down just a little bit? My voice is loud, and this thing is spawking in my ear. You good? Everyone hear me okay? All right. I believe we skipped three. Thank you very much, sir. Nope, I answered it. It was the 403B contributions per employment contract. Number four, why is $10,000 added to this account versus FY '21 and default $8,700 over FY '20 actual? If not contractually obligated, should this be in the default? The, the actual amount is $78,000, not $7,800 listed above. The $10,000 was added to make the line congruent with the tuition reimbursement related to bargaining agreements and actual expenditures over the last three years. Number five, why is this going up? Love how this is working, I'm sorry. Sure. Sure. Yep, number five, teacher retirement? Yep, why is this going up? $300,000, 14% from FY '21 budget, and $371,000, 18% from FY '20 actuals? Why is the default only up by 1.8%? The answer is that when reviewing the object code here, 52320, the default budget is an 11.98% increase over the prior year, while the operating budget is a 13.99% increase over the prior year. The answer is broken up into two parts. A, an increase related to the New Hampshire Retirement System contribution, and an increase related to position changes. A, the NHRS increased the employer rates from 11.17 for non-teachers and 17.8% to teachers, to 14.06% for non-teachers and 21.02% for teachers. This represents a 25.87% increase for non-teachers and 18.09% for teachers. And what, the main reason for this increase is due to an increase in unforeseen pension costs that the New Hampshire Retirement System is trying to recapture by 2039. Unfunded pension costs increase when retirees live longer and investment performance is not met. So that's a really Matt Angel way of saying the state made us increase the rate. The default budget considers keeping people in their same cost structure and function, while the operating budget places employees in positions that further district educational and operational goals. The increase from the default to the operating budget reflects that change. Number six, non-teacher retirement. The answer to this question is nearly identical to the teacher's retirement question above. When reviewing the object code here, 52310, the default budget is a 16.2% increase over the prior year, while the operating budget is a 22.98% increase over the prior year. The answer is broken up into two parts. A, increase related to the New Hampshire Retirement System contribution rates, and B, increase related to position changes. The New Hampshire Retirement System increase is the employer rates from 11.17% for non-teachers to 17.8% for teachers and 14.06% for non-teachers and 21.02% for teachers. This represents a 25.87% increase for non-teachers and 18.9% for teachers. Question, Director of Curriculum, what is the reason for the 80% increase in this position? Why needed, and which specific positions fall under this line item? This is the position for our coordinator for 7 through 12 math that was hired in July 2020, and this is the salary for that position that was covered by the reduction of other positions. So that was covered by the reduction of other positions. The budget is reallocating the resources to the appropriate location. As you all know, math is a major priority for our district. Our recent SAT scores that we just reviewed in I Sa tonight showed that 20% of students were proficient on the SAT. So this is money that's important and very well spent. Special Ed salary. All right, Special Ed salary, is this for the social worker that is in the proposal to be hired? What would the cost comparison be versus a contracted social worker? And what is the cost to contract in a special education social worker four school days a week or five school days a week? The account code identified an amount here relates to curriculum, not special education. The answer to this is located in question number seven. We'll get back to this special ed social worker, though, later. Budget code. Oh, sorry, enrollment projections. Have you spoken with each of the parents who kept children out of kindergarten this year as to whether or not they will enroll in either K or Grade 1 when making your projections? How does this compare to the projections from NASDAQ? And what is the reason for any difference? What about future years? The NASDAQ projects Bakersfield will have 89 kindergarten students in the fall of 2021. NASDAQ also predicts, projects 71 Grade 1 students next fall, but we anticipate 85. There are 66 kindergarten students currently enrolled for 2021, and 19 families who chose not to enroll for the fall of 2020. Most families have confirmed enrollment for the fall of 2021. There are an additional five families who have not made a commitment regarding enrollment for the fall of 2021 at this time. I'll also note that I reviewed the district's NASDAQ numbers before this meeting. Our NASDAQ projected enrollment for next year is 1571, and our projection for next year, based on everything that we know, which certainly this is the hardest year I've ever faced to project enrollments because of either homeschooling or people not attending kindergarten, we're projecting 1550. So we're about 20 students below what NASDAQ projected three years ago when we started this process. Number 10, Special Ed. What is this increase and why needed? I thought Jody had reduced Special Ed. Is this the Special Ed social worker? If not, what is it, and where can the new position be found in the recommended budget? Why is this in the default budget when it is a new position? The answer is that this line houses two positions. The district special education, education, reading and writing specialist, and the new request for a district special education social worker, which was funded by the reduction of other positions within the special education budget. So in other words, the money that's in the, in the default budget is the money for the position that was reduced. You can't take that out, I don't believe, right, Matt? We didn't. We need to follow up on this question because there's one piece that was not answered. So can you just mark number 10, and we'll get that information to the Board and Budcom? I just want to be transparent and say that I noticed one part was, the person was asking, why is this in the default budget when it is a new position? And I don't believe that it is, but I want to double-check just to be careful, okay? Special Ed transportation, five-year average was 58K, and now is 196,000. Why is it so much larger, and did the number of students increase significantly, and what is causing the large increase? We could not identify the account and amount with the question. The budget code is the same as question number 10. The subject of this question relates to transportation. Special education transportation is estimated to increase $63,745 from fiscal year '21 to fiscal year '22. The increase is related to a change in student placements. We could not locate the 58,000 five-year average because of the discrepancy between the budget code and the subject. So whoever had this question, please contact Matt. Special Ed support staff for the middle school. What is this increase and why is it needed? It's due to the reorganization. Some paraprofessionals were reassigned to new buildings. In addition, we periodically need to switch which employees get paid through the grant. This line increased due to the changes to the grant. There were three middle school paraprofessional positions through the grant, and now there are two. What, what is this increase and why is it needed? This is supply salaries basic memorial. The '21-'22 budget accurately reflects the salaries associated with specific special education programs. This is not a new position or need. It's a reallocation of funds, similar to the answer provided for question number 12. Number 14, the supply salaries for Zone Middle School. What is the increase for and why is it needed? The 2021 budget accurately reflects the salaries associated with specific special education programs. This is not a new position or need. It's a reallocation of funds, similar to the answer provided for question number 12. Question 15, professional salaries, preschool baking. What is this increase and for, and why is it needed? Can I just say that it's really hard to do this with a mask on and glasses? Because I keep fogging up, and I'm trying to, you need like little windshield wipers. Due to the reorganization, the preschool is housed at Bakersfield and is no longer split between Memorial and Bakersfield. This line increased because the programs were merged together to one location code. So if you remember, when I presented the budget, I said, you're gonna see some increases in lines, but they're not necessarily increases in the budget. It's the location that changed, not the budgeted amount. We had two preschool programs, one at Memorial, one at Bakersfield. They're now both at Bakersfield, so Bakersfield went up, but Memorial went down. Number 16, as staff salaries, SAU, please explain this proposed increase. What is this increase for and why is it needed? This increase relates to the new position that we are working with the Board on to support the management of facilities, grounds, and safety programs. This was paid for by reallocating funds from the reduction of another position. Office clerical salaries, why is this going up so much? 80,000 more than FY '21 budget and 68,000 greater than FY '20 actual. Have we added position? Hold on a sec. The object code here includes all support staff regardless of their duties, such as clerical. This increase includes the position discussed in answer 16 above. So it's the same as answer 16. That's the position for the district-wide math coordinator, or the 7 to 12 math coordinator. Special Ed salaries, district default budget. This was not in the previous year's budget. How can it be in the default? The answer is, the 2021 budget, this position was paid for by reallocating funds for a special education teacher. It needs to be coded properly and will be fixed as a result of this question. So whoever asked that question, thank you. You caught something. Always helpful. Never claim to be perfect, just try and really hard. All right, number 19, default payroll expense. What type of spending is part of this account? Description says anticipated federal projects, but coding is in a payroll account. This is a holding account for all of our federal grants. Last year, we tried to budget by grant, and it has been proven to be very difficult. The state has not handed out grant allocations that can be used for budget planning. Going forward, you will see the same generic account as a placeholder for the budget. This is a repeat question. I've been here for four years. It's asked every year. It's a placeholder for the grants. Travel stipend curriculum default budget. This was not in the previous year's budget. How can it be in the default? Because it's a contractual obligation. Number 21, clerical overtime default budget. This was not in the previous year's budget. How can it be in the default? Budget analysis worksheet you were looking at was created manually. There are two lines with the same account information. One has the prior year data, while the other has the current year data. When looking at both lines with the same account number, you will see that the default amount is identical to the current year budget. Number 22, professional service for program improvement. Sorry. What goes into this account, and why is it increasing 22%? $23,000 from FY '20 actual to FY '22 budget? This question compares the proposed operating budget to actual FY '20 operating costs. When comparing the proposed operating budget to the prior year operating budget, the increase is 3,500, which is related to increasing training costs at the SAU and facility staff related to state mandates. For the most part, budget amounts are based on contractual obligations, teachers and administrative professional staff. The increase in facilities training is related to the need to educate our employees for safer and more efficient operations, such as Alice Training and the operation, appropriate handle of, handling of dangerous chemicals. 23, dues. What is the total of the proposed dues expense? Are there any part of the dues and fees required per any bargaining agreements? Why would these budgeted 9% higher than actual? The budget for dues was actually decreased approximately $4,000 from 2021 to 2122. This reflects the actuals that have been lower than the budgeted amount. Dues are part of the professional growth for staff and administration. These vary from year to year, so the budgeted amount reflects the anticipated cost. Some examples include, but are not limited to, the New Hampshire Interscholastic Athletic Association. So, in other words, the group that helps Bob with, with sports. The New England Association of Schools and Colleges, NIASC, which we do our accreditation through. The New Hampshire School Administrators Association, which is the association for our principals. The New Hampshire Association of School Principals. The New Hampshire School Boards Association. I, I apologize, NHSAA is me, and the NHS, NHASP is the principals, so I wanted to clarify that. The School Boards Association, which is the school boards group. The New England School Development Council, NASDAQ, which is the group that did our, does our enrollment projection studies. The New Hampshire Association of Special Education Administrators, obviously Ms. Guterman participates in that. The Plastow Area Commerce Exchange, which is the group that we meet with regularly that provides incredible internships for our kids. It's a great group. The Council for Exceptional Children, again, special education. Society for Human Resource Management, which is our HR person's group. These are not contractually obligated, but are necessary for the successful functioning of a school district. Number 24, dues co-curricular, what is this used for? These dues are for high school programs, drama, the New England Theater Association, the National Association of Student Councils, the math team, the National Honor Society, and fees associated with the New Hampshire Scholar Tickets. Student Council Program fees, youth and government fees, the YMCA ninth-grade activities, and the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Conference. Number 25, dues for the library total, what are these used for? Please break down. The account number given has a proposed operating budget of $6,900, not $17,500, as noted in the amount above, which is the same for the default budget in the current year operating budget. We're unable to determine the exact source of this question, however, assuming the same object code, 58100, but a 23XX function code. However, assuming the same object code, 58100, but a, a, a 23XX function code administration results in the same total, 17,5. In this instance, the proposed operating budget is 2,000 less than the default budget. Um, the decrease was to match the dues cost to the following. The National School Boards Association, the New Hampshire School Boards Association, and the New England School Development Council. Number 26. Admin total, what are these used for? Please break down. The account number listed has a requested amount for 3,604, not 40,226, which is $572 higher than the default in the current year operating budget. The balance is within $100 of the five-year average of actual expenditures for this count. We were able to add a group of accounts that agrees with the 40,226 amount, which are the dues not related to securities, uh, that do not relate to security services, library instructional training or guidance. For these accounts, the dues are the same as prior years, except, um, there was an increase in dues and fees for the business office, which include the New Hampshire School Administrators Association, the New Hampshire's Association for School Business Officials, uh, and the flexible spending account administration fee. Number 27, uh, information access fees curriculum. For this and all the info, uh, info access fees, I've heard that you are auditing this for costs and usage. What are the results of your audit and what is the usage per student for each online course and program? What are the other new audits of costs that you've done? What are the results? What are in process and when will those be done? We have not even, we have not, we've done two different types of audits. Three years ago, we did a very extensive audit, um, of all of our software and we removed some software and added some software based on what was happening. But we haven't done another, we have not completed another evaluation this year yet due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, we did reduce the amount by $66,000 because we looked at our actual expenditures and decided to make a reduction and then work on that, uh, process over the course of the next year. Number 28. Online access fees. Though this is lower than FY 21 budget, why is it so much higher than FY 20 actual? 33,000 equals 34% increase. Please refer to the answer in number 27 above. The proposed operating budget is based on FY 21 actuals and encumbered amounts. Number 29, data communications. What is the driver for the large increase 40% from FY 21 budget and 19%? Uh, I think that's 10.7 maybe? It says 10.7 from FY 20 actual. Due to COVID, we increased our bandwidth to the schools to conduct remote synchronous learning sessions from each school, each of the school locations. So we had to increase that amount to give us the bandwidth to do the work that we've been doing. Number 30, software. What goes into this account and why is it increasing 22% to $23,000 from FY 20 actual to FY 22 budget? We reallocated some of the online access fees from one line item to this one for better clarity with regard to state reporting. Okay, so I've done one third of the questions. Am I just going to keep going right now? Everyone good? Am I going way too fast? I'm really trying to be reasonable. There's a lot of them. Okay, all right. I just wanted to check in because we're a third of the way done. If anyone needs a bathroom break, now's the time. Uh, number 31, property lease. What do you need more space for? Uh, there will be an opening in the SAU building. Uh, it's, uh, we would move special education to the new space, which will provide meeting rooms to accommodate multiple parent meetings. These meetings will require a confidential meeting space and we can also provide a neutral area for parents in the district to discuss matters pertaining to individual education plans. Additionally, this space would further secure special education information from the rest of the SAU. The business office would move into the space currently occupied by special education. Curriculum and human resources would fill out the space that the business office currently occupies. Due to the reorganization of the district and the sale of the seminary, building storage has become at a premium. A meeting space, which is needed frequently, would be provided as part of the lease. Uh, and so that's something that we want to discuss with the board. Uh, that was a $20,000 cost. Uh, budget rental land and building. It seems that this spending shifted from 54410 coding to 57200 coding. Is there a reason that this was switched? Uh, yes and no. Yes, I'm not going to read the account number, move to account number. And then no, the first account number relates to a purchase of a power contract for the solar heater at Memorial Elementary School, which ended. So if anyone needs clarification on that one, it was kind of a technical question. Please contact Mr. Angel. Uh, number 33, athletics. In past years, there have been a request for more transparency about the budget for athletics without response. Under the new AD, please give details about the cost per student budgeted for each of the sports and co-curricular activities, including replacement plans. So we want to be clear, we think that's a great idea, but we did not have that prepared per student, per pupil. That will take a long time for Bob to work on, but we are going to do that. And we, we, we think it's really good. The average expended in FY 18 and 19, as these are the last, uh, two years of full athletic participation. So remember, we had a lot of sports get canceled last year and be limited this fall. So it's really tricky to figure out these costs right now during COVID. Some reallocation of nominal requests, uh, more clearly aligned with expenditures in three areas. New equipment, replacement equipment and supplies. So Mr. Dawson has been literally combing through all the stuff that he inherited when he took over as athletic director and he's working on figuring it out. Um, the impact of the realignment on middle school sports was another, uh, area. This impact is felt most distinctly in that we now have approximately 100 fewer students to draw from. And sometimes some teams will likely not be needed as a result. As for replacement plans, there's a uniform rotation under development as well as ongoing work needed to be done to maintain the track surface, our bleachers, hoops, and curtains in the four gyms and other equipment that needs to be maintained. These expenses may be included in other areas of the overall budget document. So some things are athletically relate, athletic related, but they're not necessarily just housing athletic. They might be in capital or other parts of the budget. So Bob's trying to kind of get used to where everything is so that he can work on it. And he's working hard on it. Um, as the athletic director, who is new to this position, but not to administration, continues to audit the programming, he will be making further recommendations over the next 12 months. Uh, remember, Mr. Dawson's only been in the position for four months. So, or well, a little longer now, but not by much. Um, we don't have the detail for cost per student yet for athletics, but it's something that we agree would be really helpful in the future. So thanks for asking for that. Um. Number 34, what are athletic technical services? And why are they going up $15,000 from FY 21 budget, 13,000 from actuals? This covers mostly three areas. Officials for games and soccer, basketball, softball, et cetera, and timing services for track meets, police detail for football, basketball games and cross-country meets. And the expense of our new Athletica trainer, trainer is approximately $22,000. The middle school request assumes the possibility of fewer B teams due to the smaller enrollment for only grades seven through eight. The amount spent in FY 21 was lower due to the cancellation of the spring season. Tuition LEAs in-state. What goes into this account and why is it increasing 23%? 85.9,000 from FY 20 actual to FY 22 budget? This is a standard question every year. This is about out-of-district placements for special ed. They go up and down annually. Um, this is used to fund students who complete their high school program at Exeter Adult Ed, either in the adult diploma or the high set exam. We've had an increased number of students that have needed to take advantage of this option. Many by decision of the IEP team. The 1,300 account is used to pay tuition for SST. So this year, we estimate 70 students that will not, uh, will want to attend. And the estimated tuition rate is 3,350. Um, and the actual 2021 rate was 3,182. You will not receive the actual rate until much later in the budget process as it's dependent on the enrollment projections for the region. So they serve five, five different schools. I think it's five districts, Brian?
Was it more?
Six high schools. So we don't know how many students each high school is going to send to SST. Um, the reason for this increase is due to changes made to the tuition count rate calculations for sending schools. This increase was decided by the governing board of the SST. And I have to say that I did, I did push that board very hard. Pete Broderick can attest, he was at the meeting. We just lost the votes with the way that they calculated the, uh, never mind. You won't remember. Um, they, they, just kidding. They, they just, uh, they, they felt that the way that they were charging for special education services wasn't working and so they reallocated the special ed costs to all the sending stu, every student pays a portion instead of just the students that have an IEP. And it caused our tuition to go up significantly because we send the most students. And I told them, if you change this tuition model, we're going to send less students because we can only afford so much. And they did it anyway. So it's not much we could do. We, I fought hard on that. I, I stretched it out over four meetings. I think they were kind of tired of me by the time I finally relented to the vote. What's that?
I was tired.
Yeah, well, that's nothing new. All right, number 36. If you don't, I, I always joke with Pete, I'm sorry. Um, number 36. Tuition non-public, what goes into this account? Why is it increasing 75,000, uh, from the FY 21 budget and default 20%? And 138,000 from FY 20 actual? These are the tuition, I, I apologize. This was the answer that I was talking about on number 35. This is the tuition lines for the out-of-district placements. There were changes to student placements, which reflects an increase in these lines listed above. Uh, if you look at the special education tuition lines, the total cost for out-of-district placements actually decreased. The above budget lines do not capture all the tuition lines. In-state tuition increases, increases approximately 5% each year per student and out-of-state increases approximately 8 to 10% annually. We always battle that one every year. It's a tough, tough one. So this next question is incredibly long and, and we discussed how to answer it. Um, it has four parts. And so what we did is we, we provided a summary answer and then anyone who wants to read the whole thing later, you can do that. So this is about the default budget calculations, beginning on slide 17 of the superintendent's proposed budget. Regarding the calculation of the default budget, beginning on slide 17 of the superintendent's proposed budget, there are no one-time expenditures listed to arrive at the 35,527,941 dollars and 94 cents total. So then it goes through a whole list of all the different things. So I'm just going to go down here and read you the, the answer. And we answered each part separately, but in summary, the district is not able to remove money from the default budget for expenses that were not budgeted. The reality is that we have to fund the cost of PPE regardless of the budget. Um, and money came from all areas of the budget to cover the need. The district removed the money for PPE from the budget. If the district removed the money for the PPE or COVID-related costs from the budget, it would mean that we would have to cut the academic intervention program because most of the money for PPE and other things was funded by unfilled positions and supplies lines, in addition to the relatively small amount of grant money we received as compared to the other amounts received by school in Maine and Massachusetts. Now I just want those of you who are here to understand this. Similar-sized school districts in Maine received between $2 and $3 million to handle the pandemic. In May, I got $100,000. And then this month, we got about $260,000. If we had filled the entire academic intervention program this year, we would be in real trouble. And that's why it's not filled. It's not filled for two reasons. To be completely transparent, we are one year ahead of our anticipated time for fully launching the academic intervention program because we did such a good job managing the construction projects. We're one year ahead. Number two, we had so many needs for teachers that were out on leave. We had to use our interventionist to cover, to teach so that we could open school. We're in survival mode. We have still 20 people out on leave right now. So when people say, well, they said they were going to do this academic intervention program and it didn't happen, my response is nothing is happening except survival. I understand, but we have to cover the classrooms that kids are in every day before we provide any other program. And we have got everybody and their brother teaching classes right now. Everybody. Some teachers are doing classes during their prep periods and getting additional compensation so that we can cover and keep school open. So I just want to be clear that, that we can't reduce the amount of money that we spend on. Those aren't one-time expenses. They're, they're unanticipated costs. It's really challenging this year and I can't thank Matt Angel enough for everything he's done because I really didn't know how we were going to do it. When I found out that my colleagues received $2 to $3 million to open school, they're like, yeah, we bought air systems and we've hired teachers and there's no way we could do it without this money. I'm like, I think there is because we're doing it, but it, it really is, it's really hard every day. Number 38. Um, life skills. I see an increase in items associated with life skills. What is being done to make a more robust program? And what are a few examples of how the money will be spent? Life skills is our self-contained program at the high school designed to provide students with hands-on instruction for practical skill building in order to prepare them for an independent life, uh, independent adult living. Similar to other programs in the district, we budget for supplies, $2,000, professional services, $2,000, and equipment of $500. This program also has transportation costs associated with it for functional field trips and internships. There are no substantial increases to this program. The 2122 budget accurately reflects the salaries associated with this specific special education program and there are no new employee positions. Uh, question about class size. What is the basis for determining appropriate class sizes? All the research I have been able to find shows mixed results. The class size is a key determinant of improved outcomes for students, except when dealing with economically disadvantaged students. What are the keys for improved outcome for students? The research I have found says one is the quality of teachers and the professional development given to improve teacher quality. Please outline the keys for student outcomes. The answer is, thank you for asking this question. As a school district, student learning sits at the center of our work and is the focus of our decisions. Policy IIB, uh, which is linked here for you, is our policy on class size. The keys for improved student outcomes for Sanborn students stems from the graduate success profile, which is comprised of the portrait of a graduate and the definition of student success that was approved by the school board in February of 2020 and will also hopefully lead to the development of a district strategic plan. We want to support quality teaching by providing quality professional development that can be applied in the classroom, augment learning through the appropriate use of technology, and enhance collaboration among teachers by supporting their professional learning communities. In concert with community and family support, these keys will enable us to provide quality educational experiences for our students. I can't stress enough that the quality of our teachers is critical. And supporting our teachers is absolutely critical. Student teacher ratio. Over five years, the student teacher ratio with your estimate. Uh, I'm sorry, I'll read that again. Five years of student teacher ratio with your estimate of what may be reported this year at the NHDOE. Please also give estimated ratio with this budget recommendation. What is the estimated cost per student with this budget? So there's a little grid here that Mr. Angel created for everyone to see that. Uh, hold on just a sec. If you look in 2017, 18, we were, we had 10.1 teachers per student. That was the ratio and the elementary school cost was 19,384.65. The middle school cost was 17,929.72. And the high school was 17,224. I'm not going to read all of these, but I'll just go up and, and do what's projected for this year. This current school year, because the number of students has dropped so dramatically due to COVID and folks who are homeschooling, um, our current student teacher ratio is 8.4, which makes the cost per pupil 20,560 at the elementary and 17,335 at the high school. For next year, we anticipate that to go back up to 9.5 with 15, 1,550 students and the cost for elementary would be 21,760 and the high school would be about 18,108. It's really hard to lower the, the, the student teacher ratio when the number of students is constantly declining. Right? It's like chasing your tail. When students go down, the number of students enrolled go down, the number of teachers go down. It just ends up being similar. So that's really hard. Um, the student teacher ratios can be found on the Department of Education website at this link here. And the cost per pupil reports can be found on the New Hampshire Department of Education's website here. But I want to be careful because the 2122 is an estimate in-house that we did for this document. That does not exist on the DOE website. All right, nor does the 2122. All right, nor does the twenty-one, the nineteen, the two, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, this school year. That won't be on there until next fall. So please don't go to those links and look for some of the top two data points. They don't exist on the state website, okay? All right, so for number forty-one. Student support staff ratio. Five years of student support staff ratio with your estimate of what may be reported this year at the New Hampshire DOE. Please also give an estimated ratio with this budget recommendation. That, it's actually not possible or feasible to compute the overall student and support staff ratios as our support staff, paraprofessionals, uh, uh, support students with IEP team decisions. Some students require a one-on-one support, while other students may require a small group support, and some require support in the classroom. Paraprofessionals are placed where they are needed based on IEPs. Number forty-two. COVID restrictions. Slide seven, due to COVID restrictions, I believe kids will be behind, be behind in learning. Please explain how we can justify cutting teachers at this point. This also provides, I'm sorry, pertains to slide eleven. The social worker salary, what would the price be for a contracted social worker versus a social worker employed by the school? The reduction of teachers is based on enrollments. Our intervention program was left untouched and is absolutely still funded in the budget. That includes six teachers and eleven pairs. And they will provide instructional support for our students, and we've asked the board and Budcom to consider more professional development and resources to improve instruction. Please see slides fourteen through seventeen from the budget proposal for these items. Hiring a social worker as opposed to a contracted employee was preferable due to having the employee onsite during school hours as opposed to sharing that person with another district or entity. The social worker is budgeted at an estimate of eighty-five thousand, which is what we budget for all new positions. It would cost an estimated one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand to one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-four-hundred if we were to contact, contract for this service five days per week, and approximately one-hundred-and-four to one-hundred-and-ten-thousand for five days, uh, four days per week. Please see the chart at the end of this document for the enrollment analysis. I'll show you all that in a minute. Well, a lot of minutes. Thanks, Jamie. At least you caught that, or it was kind of fun. Trying here, folks. This isn't exactly Jerry Seinfeld material. Student transportation homeless. Homeless student, oh, FY twenty actuals was zero spending. Five-year average was twelve K. Why are we budgeting thirty-six K? Homeless student transportation is required by federal law. We were unable, we are unable to accurately estimate the need for a period that begins nine to ten months from now. Past history has shown that transportation for one student can cost almost forty thousand dollars. Some years, we have homeless students that require transportation, while other years, we do not. Number forty-four. Amount five-hundred-and-four, twenty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-one student transportation cost, other sources. The FY twenty actuals was two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand in spending. The five-year average was three-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand. Why are we budgeting five-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-eight K? An eighty percent increase over FY twenty actuals, as we did not get that kind of credit from Salter in FY twenty. Slide nine, transportation costs, understanding COVID restrictions, bus routes may be longer this year, but next year, will we be able to keep all the routes under forty-five minutes with this budget? Great question. Thank you, whoever asked that. Answer, the credit we received is found in the diesel fuel. The transportation costs here are for preschool, special education, athletics, and co-curricular activities. None of these costs here relate to regular-day transportation, which can be found at, looks like a phone number, I'll just leave it there for you. We are working with the bus company to reduce transportation times by considering bringing in another bus into the system. Yes, we will be able to keep all the bus routes under forty-five minutes with this budget in compliance with school board policy EEA, which is linked here for anyone who would like to review it. If the school board would like bus times to be less than forty-five minutes, the board will need to allocate more money. So we just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that, and for some reason, the, the question here needs to be, somebody wants to fix the Google Doc. I don't, this one should have a number. So this would be like number forty-four-point-five. Individual salary expenses. Questions pertaining to individual salary expenses such as FICA or Medicare expense. Can we lump these into one question if the answer is the same? More teachers, if, i.e. the answer being more teachers took insurance and it went up. So the reality of the matter is HIPAA laws present us from reporting, prevent us from reporting health insurance line items to the public, and that's because an insured individual can be identified with the, within the accounting records. However, estimated health insurance rates have not yet been provided by our health insurance provider. We made an assumption that it will increase between five-point-five to six-point-five percent, which is down from our typical estimate over the last three years of ten percent. So one of the ways that we found the million dollars that we reduced is we reduced a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from this area. Because consistently for a few years, it's been lower, and we wanted to, to have more accurate reflection. Number forty-five. Sixth grade sports. Where is the budget line item for sixth grade sports? Grades four, five, and six will have an intramural program when the conditions surrounding COVID allow us to entertain after-school activities with students. Currently, this is budgeted through the extracurricular activities. And I believe that's, is that part of the CBA now? I believe that's part of the collective bargaining agreement. So the money is in there. And what about music programs? Last year, chorus could only run for one season at the elementary schools because we did not have it in the budget. That's actually not accurate. The answer is that the chorus at the elementary school has always run for part of the year, but now that the schools are reorganized, elementary chorus at Memorial is during the school day, and Bakey has general music classes in the weekly schedule during the day. Since it is during the school day, there is no longer a budget line as it's part of our general music teachers' school day expectations. Teacher turnover costs. This may not be possible for a meeting this week or be appropriate, but I would like to see an estimated cost analysis to show what teacher turnover costs the district long-term. What are the training costs, and how much time are teachers spending training the new teachers? How much time is spent on the hiring process, and can we quantify that? So the answer is, no, you really truly can't, but we're going to try because there's so many informal, when, when folks who teach, I see a lot of teachers here. When you teach someone and you work with your neighbor and you train them in the model that you use, that's an inquantifiable amount of time. It's daily. It's ten, fifteen, twenty minutes here, a phone call. It might be on the weekend over dinner. It just, it doesn't really give us, there's no way to quantify that, but I'm gonna try to use some statistics to just give an estimate. I just want to be clear, this is rough. According to the Learning Policy Institute, in two thousand seventeen, the average suburban district can expect to spend eleven thousand dollars on every new teacher it hires, quote, "bringing them up to speed so they can be effective." Specific to Sanborn, we estimate the cost to be between ten thousand and fifteen thousand dollars depending on the teacher and the level of professional development needed. This includes the cost of daily pay, professional developers, administrative costs, time for supervision and evaluation, support for learn, learning the curriculum, and teaching practices in professional learning communities as well as mentoring costs. Mileage. Why is this up? I don't even know what that says. A hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-four-hundred percent increase based on current IRS travel rate of point-five-seven-five. That's over twenty-five-hundred miles. I think that's a typo. It's kind of a fun.
It was a typo in the report.
Oh, oh, okay. Thank you. Yeah. Who is this for and what type of travel are we talking about? I can tell you all, I'm not driving to California. This is the high school portion of an estimated calculation based on shared staff that travel is part of their duties. For twenty-one, twenty-two, it's three music teachers and one secretary. But we have music teachers that travel throughout the district. Mileage. Why is this going up forty-five percent? Forty-one, uh, four-point-one-thousand from FY twenty actuals when some of the reimbursements were included in pay changes and thus should go down. The question here relates to the requested mileage to prior-year actual. However, mileage identified here is a budget-to-budget reduction of twenty-six-point-seven-nine percent when comparing the default budget and current year operating budget to the amount requested. We reduce the mileage reimbursement to be closer to the prior-year actuals. The mileage is really hard because it varies from year to year. We try to keep it reasonable, but it's a challenging thing to estimate in a big budget like this. Number fifty. COVID expenses. Previous is, was slated for four-hundred-and-seventy-five-seventy-five but is now zero. Not sure what the spending was on, but it was, was it wise to set the budget at zero-zero for additional COVID expenses? This account was an attempt to segregate COVID costs in the prior year. We were trying to work on a, a, a report, and we've not yet moved the amount in the general ledger for grant purposes. At this point, any reimbursement that we receive for prior-year COVID course, costs will be recorded as revenue, reimbursement of the prior-year expenditures. So Matt, is it my understanding that's just kind of a bunk account that you were setting up to try to get those costs and you just decided it wasn't gonna work? Okay, thank you. ACP initiated. What is ACP? Why did it previously run between eighteen thousand, eight and eighteen thousand, but is now budgeted for a hundred-and-fifty thousand? This is a placeholder account, but we still had actual spending in this account. What is the spending here, and why would we have eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-six not have cleared in the FY twenty actuals? Per the Professional Staff Collective Bargaining Agreement, otherwise known as the CBA, Additional Compensation Plan, ACP designates monies for professional staff initiatives, school district-sponsored summer workshops, or staff-initiated summits, reimbursements for the cost of conferences and workshops, sorry, conferences and workshops, and district-wide committee work. This is required by the CBA, and the funds are moved from one line item to another to the appropriate place in the budget during the year to cover the cost to be consistent with state report. Next question, ACP initiative. Better at this. FY twenty budget is one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand for transfer. The actual transfer of funds was one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, but FY twenty actuals on this line say only one-hundred-thousand. Why would that be? Also, why is this line coded as Additional Compensation Plan, ACP Initiative? This line is actually titled Transfer to Capital Reserve Fund, not APC, ACP. The one-hundred-thousand are items voted on during the March two thousand nineteen district meeting and were transferred to the trustees of trust funds in FY twenty-twenty. Number fifty-three. Books and periodicals. What is the main driver for the fifty-three-thousand-dollar increase, sixty-nine percent from FY twenty actual and FY twenty-one budget? Is this in addition to the eighty-thousand noted in the board discussion and choice slide? In prior budgets, books were commingled with online access fees. We re-classed two, twenty-nine-thousand-four-hundred to line item, the lines there, books and curriculum. The remainder is the purchase of the Teachers College writing books and some math books for Memorial, which can be found at, and then you can see the other account line. Number fifty-four. Six thousand. Co-op planning supplies. Description here is the Extended Learning Opportunities, ELO supplies, but we had ELO in past years and have never used this account before. So, so we're supplied from the supplies budget presumably? Why the separate breakout here, and is there a commensurate decrease in the supplies accounts? In previous years, the ELO supplies were funded through other high school supply accounts. Funds have been reallocated from those lines to this line. So the answer is yes, there should be decreases in other lines. That's correct, right, Brian? Yep, thank you. Number fifty-five. Forty-two-thousand-dollar supplies math. What's specific math supplies? Will this money be spent on? This looks to be a new line in the budget. Well, I just want to thank whoever asked this because we had had a conversation prior to presenting the budget. This is actually a budget item that needs to be corrected, so it's good news for everybody in the sense that the original presentation, the school board was asked to consider adding one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars for a new math program, which was on slide fourteen. There's about five-hundred-thousand dollars of items on slide fourteen, and that is one of them that we need for the district. And we initially created the budget, this amount was housed in each school budget. The school budget request for the math program, the amount of forty-two thousand for DJ Bakey Elementary should have been removed. We should have also, upon discovering that this, because of this question, we looked at the other elementary school, and we should have removed thirty-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-two from another account at the Memorial School. So basically, we found seventy-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-two dollars in the budget, and we're recommending using those funds to pay for a large portion of that new math program without having to add any money to the superintendent's recommended budget. Thank you, whoever caught that. Oh, and Matt says he's sorry, and he'll buy whoever caught it a latte. Didn't really say that. I just obligated him to Starbucks. I want him to get me a latte. That's all it's about. Educational administrative supplies at Bakey. Can you please detail the increase in educational administrative supplies at Bakey while all other buildings have a net decrease in these categories? The supplies regular line was reduced, and this line was increased to more accurately reflect what amount of supply line is spent on administrative supplies? These include items like letterhead, fax cartridges, envelopes, correction tape, et cetera. Again, we, we are working really hard to try to make a transparent budget that's reflective of where the money really comes from. So Mr. Snyder had been using money from other areas to cover things. He, he leveled it out, which is exactly what we asked him to do. Number fifty-seven. Capital improvements. Why is there no money allotted for capital improvements at the high school and middle school? Isn't there an, an issue with the alarm system at the high school and water and MS? IRS defines the capital improvements as allowance for non-structural components, heating, plumbing, electrical, fire protection, security systems, and elevator, elevators. Why would we not budget for any of these types of improvements? And what happens? Is any of those items need to be replaced? So the account identified relates to transportation. However, we have not identified capital improvements with this budget plan as capital needs should correspond with the capital improvement plan. The items identified here relate to repairs and maintenance, which we budget for under the twenty-six-hundred series function codes. For example, the water repairs to the system at Memorial will fall under, uh, that, is that the same code? Matters at a different one?
That water repair is gonna be deposited in that account that's being.
In the, in the bottom there, the, the fifty-four, three-hundred. Just wanted to make sure I was saying the right thing.
Budget code at the top, next to fifty-seven, that's.
Okay, that's transportation. All right, great. So to answer the question, we have a capital improvement plan that's being developed as part of our strategic planning process, and there'll be a lot more coming out about that once we get the budget settled. I'll talk about it some more at the end of the evening. Number fifty-eight. Salary summer school. Is the district taking away summer school programs that are offered? If so, why? What have the, uh, why have the summer program items, line items been zeroed out? Think back to the March two thousand twenty district meeting. The voters approved Article Eight for Before and After School and Summer Activities Revolving Fund. The line item that was removed is now within the revolving fund expenditures that will be funded through fees generated by this program. Great catch, whoever asked this question, because that's really important. We are totally still offering summer programming. We just didn't want, we, we, it's been put in the right spot. So thank you very much. More tightening up of where things go. Purchase services, five-hundred thousand. Please provide specifics as to what these services are with a breakdown or chart. The answer is, this cost relates only to payments for our school food service contractor. And note, we are going out to bid for this service during this winter for the period we are budgeting. Number sixty. We are two-thirds of the way through. Number sixty. Can I just say, I really don't like doing this with a mask on? Because I can't see. My glasses keep, oh, I said that before. Sorry. Oh, thank, oh, like this? Glasses thing is new to me. Oh, that's a really good idea, like bend it up. Oh, oh, like this. Okay, yeah, 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 I got it. All right, I'm trying. I think I'm doing better already.
Works. Thank you.
Hey, all right. Thank you. Thank you. That's much better. All right. Thank God for progressive lenses. Is, uh, why is there still electricity being budgeted for, for the old campus now that it is sold? There are three parts to this. First, we continue to operate the Swayze Gym. Remember, we, we kept the Swayze Gym? Right? I'm looking at Maura because she asked a lot of questions about that. Second, we are paying for a portion of electricity at the old middle school because the SLC only rented the front half, right? They didn't rent the whole thing. And third, the account names need to be changed to reflect old campuses rather than just the seminary. So it says the seminary, but it's not. It's actually the old campuses. Question, DAD Dare. This program only costs an average of twenty five hundred dollars. Why is it now being eliminated? Alcohol and substance abuse is one of the leading causes of death in kids aged thirteen to nineteen. Why are we eliminating a, eliminating a problem that teaches about prevention? And what are you replacing this with? Excellent question, thanks for asking. This program is not being eliminated. It has not been used since two thousand seventeen. So it's just not happening at all. We're removing the unspent appropriation request, but the school district does work collaboratively with local organizations such as the Southern Rockingham Coalition for Youth, SOROC, which I think a lot of you know Charlotte Scott, right? She's always around. And to, to provide prevention programming to students and families in all three communities. So we, I want to be very clear, this is a very important issue and there are no cuts in that department at all. It's just that this money had been earmarked and has never been used since I, since I've been here. For facilities, do we have a facilities manager? And if not, who is in charge of overseeing the facilities now and in the future? Why would we not have a facilities manager budgeted for? And what would that position cost even part time? So the answer is no, we don't really have a facilities director. The business administrator is taking over responsibilities for that program, but we are reviewing the need for this position. And that is the position being discussed in slide sixteen, when I said that there was a, a position that needed to be discussed. The board is going to be talking about that very soon. Number sixty four. Eliminate six point five positions at the high school. Specifically, what six point five positions will be cut at the high school? How will that be broken down? Is it merely based on a dollar amount? And if so, what is the amount? And admins need to find the appropriate number of staff reductions that can satisfy that dollar amount. The answer is that the actual positions that are eliminated will be determined prior to four one two thousand twenty one and will be based on students' needs for courses and programming. Between November two thousand twenty and February two thousand twenty one, the high school will be engaging in a process to determine whether or not the current master schedule can best meet student needs in an efficient manner or not. A priority of balancing class sections will be made. So the way this works, and I, I think it's important for everyone to understand that when a high school creates a master, master schedule, they first create a program of studies. And then students select the courses that they want to take in the program of studies. And then they build their master schedule. When they see the student selections for courses, they, they will be able to determine what positions they need. They can't answer that for you today. How'd I do, Brian? All right, I'm just trying to paraphrase what you've said in meetings multiple times. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No. An announcement earlier.
Great, thank you. I do, next question, sixty five, I do not see, just so everyone knows, I don't want to gloss over that question. There will be some discussion about that, I'm sure, at the board and BudCon meetings regarding the reductions. And I'm giving you the, in the midst of ninety questions, answer right now, right? Brian put a lot of information out today. If you haven't seen that yet, please email him, he'll share it with you. All right. I also think we sent, or we are sending it out from the central office and a central office constant contact as well. Number sixty five, budget code intervention. I do not see the nine hundred thousand allocated for early intervention in this budget. Please provide a specific list of staff expenses and account related to the early intervention that is said to be implemented for this budget period. I'm struggling to find this in the budget. I can totally understand that because it's not its own line item. It's actually, it lives in the staffing lines in each budget. So Matt did a great job. He put the count, the, the accounts up there for you for where they are. But remember, they're grouped with a number of other professionals. So it's not like they're just broken out on their own. And again, at Baky, true to, true to form and what we said we would do, there's budgeted five paraprofessionals, one math and one reading interventionist. At memorial, there's three paraprofessionals, one math and one reading interventionist each. And at the middle school, three paraprofessionals and one math and one reading interventionist. The math and reading interventionist positions are already filled in the district. They're just teaching regular classes right now because we need coverage during COVID for teachers who are out on family or medical leave. All right, so I'm going to go on to sixty six. Class size increases. I'm very concerned about the class size increase at the lower grade levels. Some will go from sixteen to twenty students with a proposed reduction of paras at the Baky. School also being imposed. I just want to be clear that that proposed reduction for paras is not for the literacy program. That is for special education. So I just want to differentiate. I had a parent call me and say, you said you're cutting paras, you're cutting the literacy program. And I said, no, Jody reduced four paras in special ed. So that's, that's a very different situation. So it says, I'm very concerned about the impact of class size increase will have on our teachers and our students. I would prefer to see the reduction of the four paras at Baky, Baky removed from the proposed budget. Once intervention is rolled out and we get a sense of how it will change the dynamics of the teacher's workload in the classroom, then we should reevaluate the teachers and paras roles. So the answer to this is that's a discussion for the board and BudCon. Right, we, we have put forward what we feel that we need to run the district next year. If the board of BudCon want to add teachers back, that's up to you to discuss. And the class size policy has been listed again here. And the answer to question thirty nine, which is a very similar question, was, was shared with you. Snow days. Yes. Yeah, sure. Oh, thank you. That makes me feel a lot better, thank you, because I thought they were all at Baky. Thank you. I don't see, oh, snow days, my favorite day of the year. Right, I'm sorry. I, that's the other thing, there's no, good point, Kelly, there's no facial cues. I mean, I always know Jamie's not laughing because he's Jamie, but I try to keep it light. All right, so snow days. I, I just said this is not a budget question, it's, it's more of a question for me, just give me a call. I'll just say publicly, well, my first year here, we had eleven consecutive snow days. It was crazy. Everything. I think that with the synchronous instruction or the remote instruction, if we, we can have a balance of some regular old snow days where school's just not on. And we can have some snow days where we need to have school because we've had too many. We need to discuss that as a board and a school community and figure it out. But I just want everyone to know that, that we don't have to worry about snow days like we used to. But please know that, that there's nothing like a good old fashioned New England snow day, right? I mean, I, I get it and I'm, I'm not proposing that we don't ever have any. I'm just saying that we've got some options now that we didn't have before. The administration hated the idea of blizzard bags, where you just have canned work that you just take home and do and call it a school day. But the administration is open to the idea of having a, a, a remote instruction or, or, you know, like a, a, I'm sorry, what's the term I'm looking for? Yeah, remote instruction, like everyone's home, but, but learning online. I did tell the administration that it better all be done by eleven in the morning and you do your independent work in the afternoon because we have snowmen to build. So I've been talking to them about how to structure that so that it balances the, the social and emotional needs of our kids and maintaining the accuracy of a school day. All right, early release Wednesdays. How will this reduction of teachers, teaching hours affect the children in being able to effectively learn on those days? How will class time be reduced on that day? Or will you be shifting the schedule so normal class times remain intact? And the schedule is now based on the new amount of school hours in the weeks versus the old amount of hours? This is a great question, thank you. We have proposed that the school board reduce the school day by two hours on Wednesdays only during a typical five day week. So just to clarify, that means if we have Columbus Day, there's no early release day that Wednesday. If you have Veterans Day, there's no early release day. Martin Luther King Day, there's no early release day, right? I just want to make sure everyone understands Thanksgiving week, no early release day. We currently have six of those in the schedule and we use them, we've been using them since I've been here. This, we are proposing to increase that by twenty three or a total of forty six hours. This will allow a focus on planning and improving instruction so that the rest of the week will be more focused and productive. The hours would not be shifted. We can't shift the school day with busing and everything. You can't shift a school day and then add two hours onto the end, that just won't work. Next question, number sixty nine, early release days. As we can understand, this might impose a strain on some families who do not have long-term daycare options to cover the early release days. How will be support those families that need daycare assistance in order to accommodate this for the district? Will we be, will we be allotted any funding to help supplement daycare costs or setting up a program that children can attend? Whether it's to be run by paras or staff? So this absolutely needs to be discussed by the board and the BudCon. At this time, there's no money allocated to budget, in the budget to cover these costs, but they could be incorporated into the budget. We can work to offer a program for parents who need it and explore the allocation of paras covering the early release days for K six families who need childcare. These are all great ideas and they should be discussed and planned carefully. I just wanted to mention that, that there are a lot of different models that happen in communities for early release days. And typically it's the pre K to five or pre K to four students that need childcare, right? It's not seven to twelve, they're not going to go to like a Y program typically. Not that that would be a bad thing, it'd be great, but they won't usually go. So I just, I think it's important to recognize that we should have a conversation about this. And the administration thought this was a really great idea, by the way. Speech services. How many children receive speech services at the elementary school level? And what is the cost to transition the part-time speech position at the elementary schools to full-time? There are currently ninety, I'm sorry, there are currently ninety one students in grades K through six that receive speech services. It would cost an additional seventy thousand twenty five dollars to increase the part-time position to full-time salary and benefits. So I think Jody felt that, that the, Jody, tell me if I'm wrong, but the, the, the speech, the paraprofessional that you would hire would be able to provide the skills-based component of the speech therapy under the guidance of a certified speech therapist. And they'd be able to service more kids for the practice component of the speech therapy. So you felt like that was a nice trade off to offset that. Is there anything else you'd like to say about that? Um, number seventy one, other professional services. Why the big increase over actual? So in other words, what was actually spent versus what's budgeted? Though the same as FY twenty one budget, this is two hundred and fifty four thousand, forty four percent higher in the FY twenty actual. What is the increase in OT services at the high school? The comparison being made in the question is the prior year actual to the proposed operating budget. Many of the accounts within professional services include special education accounts that are difficult to plan for needed services. Other professional services are based on individual student needs which change year to year. Our special education needs have been increasing. Services include but are not limited to psychological services, speech and language, occupational therapy and physical therapy. Contracted rates increase up to five percent per year. Our actuals for OT services at the high school for FY twenty were about twenty nine thousand and are budgeted for thirty five thousand. For some services, our FY twenty one actuals are lower than typical due to COVID. So it's really important to remember that, that if we're not in person for that four months in a year, that can really affect these kinds of services. General questions, number seventy two. Can I get a copy of the bond payment structure, principal and interest from inception through final payment? A copy of the debt service schedule can be found on page thirteen of the budget book linked here. There have been several refundings similar to a refinancing of a home mortgage, which any savings were applied to the interest portion of the debt service. The interest after refunding column is the correct column for interest costs. Number seventy three, do we have a cost per people comparison that you can provide over this timeframe? Past five years, current FY twenty one budget and the default budget and proposed? The answer is, please see the answer to question number forty above. Default budget, can you provide me with a bridge as to how it was created with a bit more detail than the bridge in the budget book? There looks to be a discrepancy below, or it could be that I just don't understand. When I compare the Excel spreadsheet FY twenty one budget to the default budget, I see a drop of one million twenty seven thousand seven hundred and eighty six oh six. The budget book page nineteen shows a drop of nine hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and eighty six oh six. Difference is a hundred and twenty thousand, shouldn't these numbers be the same? The Excel spreadsheet includes transfers to capital reserve funds, which are not included in the default budget calculation. The specific dollar amount variance is a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, which can be found at account blah, blah, blah. If you have further questions about this, please contact the business administrator. Number seventy five, default budget. The following areas have a difference between the default and FY twenty one budget that I would like to understand better. So it's professional services for instruction default is higher, two thousand three hundred and fifty five. This is the artist and resident program where the default amount is based upon the current contracted rates. B, technical services athletic program default is higher. During the March two thousand twenty district meeting, taxpayers approved article eleven, which partially funds the Sanborn Ice Hockey Team. Within that article is the language that the cost for this program is to be included in the default budget upon its passage. This increases in the amount of article eleven. C, student transportation default is higher, called out in the budget book. And is this already contractually agreed to? If not, should it be in the fault, default? This is to bring transportation up to the current contract amount of transporting children to buildings in their current configuration post-middle school transition. Tuition LEAs and state default is higher, called out in the budget book. Is this already contracted and agreed to? If not, should it be in the default? The line item here relates to the SST tuition. Under the default budget, the program is frozen. If the levels of the prior year operating budget in the current year SST changed how their tuition was calculated, instead of separating special education tuition from regular day, they decided upon a blended tuition rate. This result increased, increased the regular tuition by seventeen point one six percent. Under the default budget, we have to calculate the tuition based upon the existing number of students who participate in this program. However, for the operating budget, we can change attendance assumptions, which we decided upon a lower amount. So in other words, it's like this. In the default budget, you get what we paid for SST in the previous year regardless of what they did with the tuition because it's default, we just have to change the number of kids that we send. In the operating budget, we lowered the number of kids that we send to reflect the more actual number of kids and the significant increase in tuition because we had to. It was a massive increase in tuition. Hope that helped. That was a tricky answer. Number seventy six, three areas of assessment for the finance subcommittee were special ed. There seem to be very many items that fall into special ed that have a coding other than special ed, i.e. speech pathology. What is the sum total in comparison of special ed funding broken out into the columns that have been outlined in the master sheet? The process of auditing special education programs, now that the district has been reorganized, will take at least a full school year. This, the budget reflects an overall reduction of one hundred and ninety four thousand five hundred dollars and the reallocation of some resources to better meet the needs of students. This work will be ongoing and cannot be completed until we're back at normal after the pandemic. Athletics. The items coded in athletics is five hundred and sixty eight thousand six hundred and fifty seven. Is this the sum total of all athletic spending? This is an eight percent increase over FY twenty spending. Yes, athletic uses function codes fourteen twenty and twenty seven twenty four, which agree with the total in question. The proposed athletics operating budget represents a one point eight eight percent increase over the current year budget. When comparing to prior year actual expenditures, our proposed operating budget is eight point eleven percent greater, which is due to ceasing normal athletic operations due to the state's COVID nineteen shutdown. In IT, there seems to be very many items that fall into IT related area that have coding other than IT, e.g. online access fees. What is the sum total in comparison of IT related funding broken out into the columns that have been outlined on the master sheet? I included in IT, infrastructure, hardware, software, online access, subscription, management systems, salaries to support, et cetera. IT, IT includes employees. IT, IT includes employee salary and related benefits, equipment purchases, supplies and repair costs. Online access fees relate to software that is needed to operate the district, such as the new financial software. The IT department is continuing to audit the program, but needs, but the needs of the pandemic frankly, Gordon and his team have been amazing. But they do not have time to audit their program right now. They have been rolling out laptops, hundreds of laptops, keeping them up and running, running around, getting Zoom calls started, making sure that the network works for everyone. I cannot speak more highly of this team. There's no words for it. Without them, we would be lost. But I couldn't ask them to, to go any deeper than what they have done already. And Gordon's only been at the helm since July. And I can't tell you what an amazing job he's done with his team. It's, it's incredible. We haven't seen a glitch, we have some glitches, we had some at the middle school, right, Don? Early on, but they got on it so fast, it's amazing. So I just, they're doing a great job. We have purchased hundreds of laptops and they have not only gotten them in and turned them around and gotten them up, but they've gotten them up and running for families at home. And so I can't thank them enough. And these three areas are three areas that need to be seriously audited and they are, are, the directors are working on auditing those areas. Special ed, um, IT and athletics. Uh. Number seventy-seven, the chart of accounts says that this means connections. So I'm going to read a bunch of these, actually, I'm just going to say that all of these are special education programs. I'm not going to read them all because they all literally have the same answer, except for number eighty and eighty-one. Um, number eighty, the chart of accounts says that this means enrichment. What does this represent and what is the purpose of the grouping of these costs into twelve seventy? Proposed budget has five hundred, five thousand and one dollars grouped into twelve seventy. We've been working toward clarifying these accounts. They, they are specifically meant for the elementary artist and residence program for our elementary schools, where students work with a professional artist to create works that become a part of the school decor and add to the rich history of the buildings. This is an example of the reordering that will occur when the new budget software is in place. And I just want to tell you, if you go over to Bakey, you can see the, the art that the kids made, um, pre-pandemic. It's absolutely unbelievable. It's amazing. So if you have a minute and you'd like to see it, I'm sure that Mr. Snyder would be happy to show it to you. It, it, and Memorial had the same. Um, I, I'm not even going to try to describe it, just go see it, please. Just take a minute and ask for a little quick tour of the artwork that this program funds. Um, the chart of account, uh, the next one was, uh, Homebase. I'm sorry, I missed one here that was, oh, I'm sorry, it was seventy-nine and eighty. Seventy-nine, um, was asking about election services and that's the money for the district meeting, specifically the voting machines and ballots for the school district. So the rest of these questions are all about, um, this, just asking for a clarification in step, Homebase, skills, those are all special ed programs. And the description is about the, uh, basically says that the budget accurately reflects the salaries associated with those specific special ed programs. They're not new positions or need, it's a reallocation of funds, similar to the, uh, answer for the question number twelve in this presentation. All right, number eighty-five, this coding is not on the copy of the chart accounts that you'd given to me. It has health insurance costs for fifty-four hundred dollars in the proposed budget. What does the designation fourteen hundred mean? HIPAA laws prevent us from providing health insurance by line item because an employee can be identified. Therefore, all co-curricular programs under the fourteen XX function code were combined. Function twenty-five hundred, this coding is not the, in the copy of chart, uh, chart of accounts that you'd given me. It has health insurance costs for eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-three in the proposed budget. What does the twenty-five hundred designation? Again, HIPAA laws prevent us to, you know, from reporting this by a line item. Um, all administrative services programs under the twenty-five XX function code were combined. Number eighty-seven, this is not on the chart of accounts I have. The description says property lease, I assume that is the property lease for the SAU office. Should I just add that to my chart that's fifty-seven, two hundred property lease? It seems like used to charge fifty-four, four-ten. If so, is there a reason for the change of account designation? Change is more accurately, uh, is to more accurately reflect property costs on state reporting. The other account codes point to the wrong location on the state report. We're planning on redoing the chart of accounts to more align with state reporting. So remember, we're getting entirely new budget software. We, we ordered it last year, Matt is getting it ready to go. Everything is going to be cleaner and clearer in the future with the new program. This program is antiquated and it's really challenging. Matt comes in my office at least twice a week and says, I hate this program, I hate this program. Um, number eighty-eight, the chart of accounts says do not use this account. Well, that's kind of scary. Um, this seems to be our default five-digit codes on our accounting, but it looks like it is not trying to specify any particular classification by using zero, 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 zero. Is that correct? The answer is that's how the system is set up. The description should read default, no project code identified. If someone needs clarification on number eighty-eight, please contact Matt. Okay, oh, that's you, yeah, okay, no, duh, I had to ask. This one, this one not on the chart of account description says COVID nineteen, so I saw this will be, um, yeah, that's, Jamie, that's that other project code that we didn't use. Uh, so we recycled the prior year report and we did not include the project code. All right, so the last one was a, a general question. Um, to be included with teacher training, there would be some counseling and therapy for additional stress and strain that they are going through with the remote learning. I have a daughter who's a special needs teacher and she's having the most difficult time with this new mode of teaching. Additional considerations should be given to our teaching staff. Well, thank you. Whoever wrote that, thank you so much. Um, we do have an employee assistance program through our health insurance provider, Cigna. Additionally, we've contracted with John Wortman, who's an amazing person who has been helping us form district goals and has been guiding our staff through the stress management procedures. Um, the staff may contact Diana Rooney, the Director of Human Resources for additional information. So I'm just going to take a second before we, we move on. I want to show everyone something before you, you, we leave this part of the meeting so that you can see an analysis that we've done as we deliberate the budget over the next three or four weeks. I want you to see this analysis. In the year of two thousand sixteen and seventeen, we had an enrollment of sixteen thou, one, one thousand, six hundred and sixty-five students. I don't know how many staff were reduced that year because it was prior to my tenure here, but I wanted to get a sense of the size and the collective bargaining increase for our teachers for that year. The collective bargaining increase for the teachers was four hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. In seventeen and eighteen, seventeen eighteen, the previous administration prior to my employment had reduced eight teaching positions for that, start of that school year. The enrollments dropped to sixteen oh one and the teachers were given five hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. This is all from the district meeting. And if anyone wants to confirm the enrollment numbers, these are Phyllis's actual October first enrollment numbers. I didn't get them from the DOE, they get a little, sometimes they'll take a student or two off and, and I wanted to know what Phyllis had on October first, but they're very close. Two thousand eighteen, nineteen, the administration under my leadership reduced seven teaching positions district-wide. Our student enrollments dropped to fifteen ninety-eight and the teachers received five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in raises that year. In nineteen twenty, we redo, we had another drop of students by about twenty and we reduced two teaching positions. One was the middle school librarian and I can't remember where the other one was, but that was anticipation of the closure of the middle school. In two thousand twenty-one, during COVID, we're at fourteen thirty-four. We reduced nine positions for this teaching year, but we added six intervention teachers. We also added eleven paraprofessionals to the budget. In two thousand twenty-one, we have fifteen fifty projected, provided that folks return from COVID, which I'm pretty confident about, and we are reducing eight teaching positions. Uh, in two thousand nineteen, twenty, teachers received five hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four. And in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, they received five hundred and forty-five thousand, ninety-four. And in two thousand twenty-one, they received five hundred thousand, uh, five hundred twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four. I, um, wanted to note that in May of two thousand eighteen, school board voted to reorganize the district and create an academic intervention program. Four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of that money has been returned to the taxpayers to offset taxes. This happened over a two-year period in eighteen, nineteen and nineteen, twenty. Nine hundred and thirty-five thousand has been allocated to support academic intervention starting in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two, oops, little error there. Um, after the reorganization was complete, all of the staff reductions since, this is really important. All of the staff reductions since I've been superintendent have been handled through attrition, all of them. Well, I need to read the bottom and then I can?
Oh, sure.
Yep, I'm going to share this whole thing in just a minute to the, to the, you know, to the world. I just didn't want people looking at their computers instead of listening. So overall, the district has been reduced by thirty-four teaching positions, oh, I'm sorry. Um, there have also been reductions in administration and support staff. We reduced an assistant principal at the middle school and we reduced other positions. Overall, the district has reduced thirty-four teaching positions over the past five years, eight of which were prior to my arrival. And this includes the projection for two thousand twenty-one. We have increased six teaching positions for the literacy pro, for the intervention program for math and literacy and eleven pairs. This is a net reduction of twenty-six teachers minus the cost of paraprofessionals, which is roughly about twenty positions. Now, this is the tricky part. Because we have declining enrollments, our cost per pupil is not going down. It's stable. That's really hard. But I also want people to hear that our teachers, based on a detailed analysis of the area school districts, have smaller class sizes but are not being paid comparably to their, their, their folks, even though they've received these raises compared to their colleagues. We are losing teachers all the time. You need to hear that from me. Retaining high-quality teachers needs to be a huge priority for this district. And if you, if you don't believe me, just check the rate of people leaving. When I have teachers telling me I have to go because I'm going to get eighteen grand more, what can I say? And there are a lot of factors that go into this, but I just want to publicly say to the community, please, please support our teachers. We do need to reduce staff and we do need to reduce the budget and we do need to get our cost per pupil in line, but we also need to support our teachers. So I want to thank you very much for listening to this long, long evening. And, uh, um, if anyone has follow-up questions, email them straight to Matt. You don't have to go through the Budcom chair. Um, and we will begin deliberation at the next school board meeting on December second, third.
No, just give me a sec.
Getting ahead of myself.
Third is the button.
Oh, yep, yep, sure. Important. Welcome. Um, I'm good, Chairman.
You all done?
Yep.
All right, it's recess for five minutes.
All right, folks, can we please get back to the meeting? Thank you. Um, we have another presentation, uh, for the informational revenues and taxes by the business administrator.
Yep. Hi, everyone, and I, I want to try to make this quick tonight because, um, because I've been told that we have some other stuff coming up after this. So, um, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go over the tax rate, um, for this, this coming tax bill. And Kingston's already, uh, uh, set their tax rate and the, the combined local and state tax for Kingston is sixteen dollars and fifteen cents per one thousand. Um, I estimated Newton, Newton hasn't been set yet. Um, I believe it was being set tonight, uh, for twenty-one dollars and forty-six cents. Um, and that represents for Kingston a six percent reduction over the prior year and Newton a one percent reduction. And really the difference between the two communities is our two factors. The first one is, is that the, that the student body between the two are starting to become equal. So that, um, I think, uh, Kingston is, um, fifty-six percent of the student population, while, um, Newton is forty-four percent of the student population. The second big factor though is, and probably more significant is, is that the valuation for Kingston increased greater than, than Newton's. I don't know what Newton's valuation is yet because I haven't seen the MS one for Newton.
So this twenty-one forty-six is based on the free reevaluation assessment?
That's right. Okay. And, and of course, yes, I, I heard that there, that Newton reassessed its valuation. So my estimate is going to change drastically because I'm not privy to any of that information.
Uh, this is just the school portion, not the state county?
Just the school portion, hence the combined local and state tax. Okay? Now, um, with the budget information that, that we presented this evening, let me try and have the right spreadsheet. Uh, yes, now, I'm estimating, now you have to understand too, when I do this estimation, um, we, we returned back some significant funds this year, um, primarily due to COVID, where we had to shut down a lot of the buildings and stop a lot of our programming. Um, so we were able to return about two point three million dollars where in previous years it hadn't, um, gone beyond, uh, one point five million. So, um, for the default budget, I'm estimating a tax rate for Kingston of sixteen dollars and eighty cents. That's a four percent increase over the current year. Um, Newton is twenty-two thirty-five and that's also a four percent increase over the current year. I don't have the valuations or the student counts to, to do the, um, apportionment correctly. Now, um, had we turned back the same amount, of course, the, um, tax rates would flatten out. For the operating budget, I'm estimating sixteen dollars and sixty-four cents for Kingston and twenty-two dollars and twenty-six cents for Newton. That represents three percent increase for Kingston and a four percent increase for Newton. Yeah, any other questions?
Okay, on to the next portion of the meeting. Public comment. Anybody would like to make any comments, please step up.
No, it is not.
I shut it off. I can turn it on for you.
Kelly Cullavan from Newton. Um, I was just concerned about the reasoning for the early releases on Wednesdays going into past Christmas break. Um, I believe that we were told that, you know, we needed them for the first six weeks of school up until Christmas break for teachers and staff for preparation for synchronous learning and kind of figuring everything out with COVID and teaching in person and kind of some extra educational hours. But I'm not really sure what the reasoning is behind continuing it past the new year. Was that clarified somewhere that I could like look it up? Did we state why?
Feel free to give me a call, I'll be happy to explain.
Okay.
Jen Lampron, um, New Hampshire. So I guess, uh, I've got a few different concerns of things that have come out within the last few days. I'm worried about the fact that the budget is cut by so much. I mean, a million dollars seems like a pretty steep cut and I'm worried what that means in terms of class size increases, especially at the elementary age. Some of those class sizes are now going to be over twenty kids in a class and that seems like a pretty high number and a pretty substantial growth, growth, um, growth of class size year over year. I'm also worried about the six and a half, um, high school positions that are going to be cut. Where's that going to come from? Does that mean that all the unified arts are going to get eliminated? Um, and in addition, that class size now of high school is going from eighteen to twenty-two. Now, I know that doesn't seem like very much, but in order to have certain classes, there's going to be less enrollment in. You have to have other classes that are going to be substantially larger to make up that balance. to make up that balance, right? So, you know, if there's a class size, let's say that's 10 or 12 because there's not a lot of interest in that class, does that mean that class now goes away? You know, what does this mean in terms of opportunities for our students? I also saw some notes about that block scheduling. It sounds like there's going to be two less classes. What does that mean for the kids in terms of options and opportunities and their educational opportunities through high school? What are we taking away? You know, because if there's two less classes, there's two less opportunities for the students. I do see that it said depth, promoting depth over breadth. So, you know, what does that mean in terms of when we are publishing a transcript for our students at the end, and then you see less classes on a transcript for a Sanborn student in comparison to other communities? Like, do we now write down in our transcript? We promoted depth over breadth, you know? Like, how do you do that kind of thing, right? So I'm just kind of worried about what does that mean to our students? And what does that mean in terms of our graduation and how we stand out as a school? You know, we're already kind of not on the higher end within New Hampshire to begin with. What will that mean as we cut all of these classes and cut these learning opportunities? And especially for like junior, some of the classes right now that we have are only offered for juniors and seniors. You only have six classes that you can take in each one of those years. What does that mean? So that also, coordinated with that, it looks like that honors with distinction is going to be cut from the 32 credits that it is right now down to the 24. So are you going to stage that? Like, what's that going to be meaningful in terms of students now that, you know, are seniors, then juniors, then sophomores? Because you want it to still, you want that graduation with distinction to still have meaning, right? You don't want to diminish that. I'm also worried about those Wednesdays off. I looked at that, and I was like, 29 early release days during the week. That's all, I mean, that's 23 additional. That's 46 hours less education within the classroom. What does that mean to the students? How about for young parents that then have to make sure to take care of, you know, pickups and so forth? It's, it just, I wonder, why do we really need that? I saw the note about additional opportunities to be able to achieve our accreditation. But if we need those additional 23 days of early release, if we can't get our accreditation without that, is that more of a systematic problem? I mean, I know there was also a comment about it would enable to do the learning opportunities without actually getting substitute teachers. So is this just more cost-cutting measure? Because I'm looking at some of these cost-cutting measures, and I'm like, there needs to be some balance between making sure that we're actually serving the students and cutting those costs. So I think that's about it for my notes. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Kristen Stroger from Kingston. My question is about the overall budget. And if this, whatever it's called, I can't even think of it, not the default budget, but the budget that's being proposed for us, if that does not pass, are we still cutting seven teachers for pairs? Is all of, are all these teachers going away regardless of this budget passing or not? This, and then all the things that follow suit with it? Or is this based on whether or not this passes? Because I think that that will make a big difference in how people vote.
I'll try to explain that to you, Kristen. Thanks for asking. The rules for the default budget changed a couple of years ago. So it's really important to recognize that reductions in staff, once they're reduced in the operating budget, have to be reduced in the default budget. So if, first of all, all that's happened at this point is I've, the administration and I have recommended a budget to the board in Budcom. They have to deliberate and then vote on a budget. So the board will deliberate and vote on a budget that they'll send to the Budcom. The Budcom will review that budget and decide whether or not to adopt it or to amend it and send it back to the board or adopt a different budget. There's a couple, there's really quite a bit to go here, right? Like, we're just, this is just round, this is just the question and answer day out of a multi-month process, okay? So I just want to be clear about that. So the answer is that, that until the board and the Budcom adopt budgets, we don't know exactly what the budget will be. But let's just say that they just adopted what was presented as is. Then the answer is correct that those cuts would go forward whether the budget passes or not. But we're not there yet. So I just wanted to be clear about that. And the second thing is, I think it's really important for people to understand that Mr. Stack will be talking a lot about what's going on at the high school over the next month. So the email he sent out today was an attempt to kind of clarify some things. And he'll be talking about that. And we'll be discussing in these meetings all of these different cuts, the early release days. So please keep attending these meetings. It is so great to see some people here this evening. Thank you for being here.
Any further public comments? Okay. So now we're on to committee comment. Secretary Judith has pointed out to me that when we make motions and second them, she is not able to capture the names of both participants because of the mask. She cannot see who's talking at the time. So if we could, in going forward, state, Arthi, all your seconds, you know, who is doing what, that will help out the secretary a great amount. That's pretty much it from my end on the committee comment. Anybody else? Annie?
I am concerned about that this week. I wondered, of the 70 kids that we currently can afford to spend with our budget, how many, I know the demand used to be higher. Are we turning kids away?
We haven't yet turned kids away, but Mr. Stack said that 70 was kind of the lower end of what he was comfortable with. We used to have over 100, but it has decreased.
We talked about going higher at one point.
Yeah, we did.
It seems like it's about a 50% increase in the situation.
If you could email that question to Matt, Annie? We'll talk to Brian and see if we can get some further clarification.
I wonder if there's some explanation that we could do to come up with some way to figure out whether it's a parent contribution or it's some sort of fundraising or it's something, something. I just hate to see that opportunity go away for kids. We have Neco, we have a lot of things. I wish we had Whittier Tech, but, you know, thank heavens we have SS2. One more thing. I was really excited to see the $117,000 goes down to a need for $40,000 for a new math program. That was, that was really great.
You liked Matt's mistake?
A couple of those things in.
Thank you.
Still stay below the default budget, which I'd really like the operating budget to be the one that passes.
We do, too.
And I'd also very much like to see a teacher contract pass.
Anybody from the school board comments? Okay. So the next meeting for Budcom is December 3rd at 7:00 p.m. here in the high school library. And we will be reviewing the school board budget recommendations and preparation for the district budget proposal for the fiscal year 2021 to 2022.
School board will stay in session. We've got a non-public following this.
Motion to adjourn the budget committee. I was asking for the moment.
Okay, I'll motion it. More of Asha.
Want me to call your second?
Yeah. We're done.